Seven o'clock, Kalih Palama Neighborhood Board is in session.
It's seven o'clock and the Kalih Palama Neighborhood Board is in session. And we're going to start with Honolulu Fire Department. Is anybody online? So we're moving along to Honolulu Police Department District One.
Good evening. Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Good evening, Chair Banes and everyone in attendance. This is Sergeant Pedro Rodriguez representing the Honolulu Police Department's District One Community Area Responsibility. Thank you for your time and patience. The information that I'm going to provide today represent the total amount of cases for this area. For more statistical information, you can go to our HPD public website at www.honoluluhp, honolulupd.org. The statistical information for the month of September 2025 is as follows. Motor vehicle thefts, actually, we had zero for the month. Previous month was a one. Burglaries, we have zero across the board this month and the previous month. Unlawful entry in, I'm sorry, thefts is going to be four this month as opposed to last month's we had five. Unlawful entry into motor vehicles, we have two. Last month, we had none. Assaults, we have zero this month. Last month, we had two sexual assaults. We have one. Last month, we had zero. Graffiti cases are going to be zero across the board. Drug cases, we had three this month. Previous month was two. Things about drug cases doesn't necessarily have to involve an arrest. Could be a report if somebody found a bag and the bag contained any type of drug. So we initiate the cases. As far as motor vehicle collisions, we had fourteen this month as opposed to, as opposed to eight on the previous month. Total cost for service this month was three hundred and twenty calls versus the two hundred and ninety-nine for last month. At this time, we have no criminal breaches to report. I would like to mention that night enforcement along the Aala Park and Beritania Community Park, which are the nearest parks to the Liliha Street borderline, have continued to keep the number of park closure violations down. Sector one night watch has conducted approximately twenty-six inspections of these parks and issued approximately eleven criminal citations. As far as upcoming events, this includes Halloween, which is October thirty-first, twenty twenty-five. Due to this event, we asked that all adults who take children trick-or-treating to be mindful and inspect all candy which is given out. Make sure the wrappers are sealed, not open. We also asked that children and adults wear some kind of reflective clothing to ensure that they are visible to traffic when crossing the streets as the potential of traffic and pedestrian incidents remains a concern to the department. At this time, I'm going to yield back the rest of my time so that I can take any questions from the board members, then from the public attendees.
Okay, thank you so much for that report. Just to make it clear, because sometimes people are online or this is their first time attending. Can you make it clear, like, what are the areas that you're in charge of? The cutoff areas?
The cutoff areas start from Kalih Street, the intersection of Liliha all the way up to, past the, past the, the overpass, the overpass on H1. I believe it's the supermarket over there, Times, I believe. So the, the library, stuff like that, we, we fall into that thing. On the east side, on the west side of Liliha is going to be D5. We're on the east side of that street. But we still respond to calls like in mayor riots and stuff, anything within that vicinity, they still send us to assist.
Okay, thank you so much for the clarification. Any questions from the board? Any questions from the community or online? Harina, thank you so much. Sorry. Sorry, if someone from the public, you can go ahead and say your name, state your name.
My name's Dale Crouppa. I have a question about Aala Park. I see the restrooms are closed. Can you give us the reason why?
Well, we don't, we do not control the restrooms. That would be the Parks and Recreation Department. I could ask them through my leadership so they can give me an answer for the next board. But we do not control that. I do know that parks are closed at, some are closed at twenty-one, twenty-two hundred. And at that time, they either chain off the entrances or they may close the bathrooms and all that.
The restrooms are closed twenty-four hours right now.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the community? Harina, thank you so much.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to, I'm going to excuse myself now because I have a case that I have to attend to.
Thank you so much. Okay, and we're going to move along to District Five.
Good evening, everyone. Can you hear me?
Yes.
All right, my name is Sergeant Kevin Takiar from the Kalih Police Station. I'll start off with the stats for September. For the month of September, there were eight aggravated assaults compared to five in August. There were seven auto thefts compared to twelve in August. Burglaries for the month of September, there were ten compared to seven in August. Sex assaults were four compared to zero in August. Simple assaults were at thirteen for September compared to the fifteen in August. Thefts for September were thirty-two, which is the same as August, which is at thirty-two. Unauthorized entry to motor vehicles or theft from a motor vehicle were at five compared to four in August. And that's all I have for the stats for the month of September. At this time, I can take any questions from the board or the public.
Any questions from the board? Any questions from the community? Dale? State your name again.
Dale Crouppa. I live Triple Eight Eva Lake Road, the seniors high-rise. I was standing on the sidewalk in front of my building. I was mistaken for a homeless person. The IHS security guards told me they had the authority to keep the sidewalk clean of homeless and they had an arrangement with HPD. So I want to know if that's true.
This, let me just be clear on this. This was a sidewalk area in front of Triple Eight Eva Lake?
Yes. I lived there.
What time of day was this?
The evening, maybe six or seven PM.
Okay, and I don't know if you want to sit on this, but can you get into a little more detail about what they told you?
Okay, he came up to me and said, you know, we keep the sidewalk clear between four-one-four Kuili Street, the IHS shelter and Eva Lake Kalahali, which is an area between my, my, and my building.
Yes.
And he kind of, he got in my face, leaned over close, and I thought I was being harassed. You know, we keep it clear and he's like, like a bouncer in a bar. He didn't say get out. But after a minute or so, I told him I live here. He got friendly. So, but what my, I want to know is, I read that some security companies have an arrangement with HPD to enforce people on the sidewalk, to remove them from it. Is that the case with IHS Security?
I would have to double check on this, but as far as I know, we have no, there is no partnerships with us and the IHS Security. Any enforcement is strictly done by HPD. I'm not sure if the IHS itself has instructed their security guards to try and keep the sidewalks clear just to the large number of complaints in that area. If they're just trying to assist on their own. But as far as an agreement between HPD and IHS, I would have to double check, but as far as I know, there is no written agreement or even a verbal agreement.
Is that a legal possibility that they can have the authority to clear a sidewalk?
No, they don't have the authority to clear the sidewalk. They can ask. They, as a public, they can ask.
Or they can ask me to get up and leave. I was standing, I wasn't sitting, but they can ask me to leave.
They can ask, but you, I mean, only the officers can actually enforce the laws.
Okay. What do you mean, they can, so anyone could ask? If I see somebody, I could ask him to move along if I want.
Yeah.
I don't have any authority, though.
For example, if you're walking down a sidewalk and there's someone standing in the middle of the road, or, I'm sorry, the middle of the sidewalk blocking your way, you can always ask, excuse me, sir, could you move on the side so, you know, I can pass you?
Okay.
Do you understand?
I did send letters, emails to County Mitchell, IHS, and a few other people, and I didn't get a response back. They said they didn't know. And Roy, I believe, Roy Miahir, and he, he wasn't familiar with what their contract was with IHS, so. But it was very offensive.
If ever happens again, you can always call us. You can call nine-one-one, have an officer respond. We can find out, you know, exactly who, identify the security guard and what his intentions are. And from there, you know, maybe if we need to, we can make notifications with IHS if they are somehow overstepping. Yeah.
Okay, because he implied when he said we keep the sidewalk clear between, you know, point A and B, he said it in a fashion like, you know, we get them out of there. You know, like bully them, get them out, we get them out. So that wasn't too cool on my part. Okay, thank you.
Okay, you're welcome.
Okay, any more questions from the community? Or online? Okay, do have here a certificate of recognition from the Kalih Palama Neighborhood Board. Number fifteen presents the certificate of recognition to a specific police officer in the CRU unit, the Crime Reduction Unit from the Kalih Police Station. I'm not going to say the name to protect his identity for the work that he has done. But thank you so much for HPD for keeping our community safe, especially from the game rooms and all the other activities that has been occurring. Everyone deserves to have a safe community, so thank you so much. It will be presented to the Kalih Police Station. Thank you so much.
All right, thank you for your time.
Mahalo. Now we're moving along to Board of Water Supply, Iris Oda.
Hi, good evening from online. Sorry I can't be there. Just here to report on-
Sorry, is there any comments? Excuse me, Iris.
Oh yeah, go ahead, good.
Is there any comments from the board or the community at this time? Can you please wait when it is our time? Iris is speaking. I'm so sorry, Iris, go ahead.
No problem. I didn't hear anything, actually. So yeah, I'm just here to report on September fifteenth near twenty-seventy North King Street. There was a main break, so just one main break for September. And one simple general water announcement. So we just need your Koko now. So we're just asking people to reduce their water usage by twenty percent. So the lower than normal rainfall and high water demand can impact our water supply. So while we're good for now, here are some simple ways that you can help ensure that we have fresh water, drinking water now and into the future. So if you can turn off your tap while brushing your teeth, washing your hands or shaving, shorten showers by a few minutes, use a garden hose on your garden nozzle on your hose, and irrigate early in the morning to reduce evaporation. So things like that, even small changes can make a big difference. So, you know, if we can work together and make every drop count. And always go to the help tips to help conserve water. Go to our boardofwatersupply.com site and look up some the tips on recycle water, any kind of water savings, things like that. So that's all. Just wanted to ask that for the public.
All righty, thank you so much. Any questions from the board? Go ahead, cards. Sorry.
I have a question.
Sure.
I'm Patricia Hoopoe. I work at Farrington High School. So what is the time schedule that we can put on water hoses and stuff? At what time do we have to turn it off?
So we don't have any set times, but we do ask that between, say, working hours of nine to five, to actually not really use the water as much because it evaporates quickly. So definitely like during lunch, you know, the hot times, you water before that or after that so that it can stay on the ground longer rather than it evaporating. So it used to be nine to five, you try not to water, but definitely closer to the afternoon, noon to five to not water. Does that help?
Yeah, thank you, because, because there's a lot of dirt and then all the dirt goes into the classrooms. So all the classrooms is totally dirty because that's why we water to try grow some grass. Yeah?
Yeah, so even if they water, oh, okay, yeah, if they water during those kind of times where it just evaporates, you're really not helping the grass grow either. So they would water early in the morning before the kids get there, hopefully. It helps the water stay on the ground and it dry, go into the soil. Yeah, but it is hard because schools have the workers that can only work during certain hours too. So I know.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Hi Iris, just a quick question. Are there any, because you gave us some plans that families should use to conserve water. Are there also similar efforts being used against big businesses such as golf courses? Golf courses use a ton more water compared to a single family of like two kids, two parents.
So yeah, many of the golf courses use recycled water, actually. If they're out in Eva, we have the recycled water that comes from the wastewater treatment plant. So they do use that water. If they're using our potable water, drinking water from our regular system, we do ask them for low flush, anything similar to trying to reduce their water usage, low nozzle, how do you call it, low-flow nozzle. That's for businesses in general, food industry, hotels. So the hotels are also big users, so we do ask for that. Restaurants to not serve water. So we do have a lot of outreach to the various industries. So that helps. Yeah, we do recycle water for the golf courses. So that is less impact to our drinking water aquifer.
Any other questions from the community? Any questions from the community or online? Harina, thank you so much, Iris. I'll see you next month.
Thank you.
Sorry, Evelyn, sorry, go ahead, Evelyn.
Hi, I just want to go back to D5 and the certificate. I had a big question regarding that action. The authority of the board versus the chair, the board acts collectively, not individually. So with this certificate, I think we should have a voice because I don't think I've, it was brought up that the certificate was going to be presented. So I think we're supposed to have a resolution or at least presented.
Board business and please, can you pass down the mic?
Yes, please, so.
Please pass down the mic. That was talking out of turn. We can take care of that in board business. Thank you so much. Please pass down the mics. I'm so sorry, Iris. We're going to continue with the agenda. Continue with Honolulu Authority for Rapid Transit, Heart. All mics, if they can please pass down since we have a- Okay. But please ask for permission and when we have board business, we will talk about it then. Thank you so much. Continuing on with Honolulu Authority of Rapid Transit, Heart.
Hi, good evening, Chair Banes, board members and community members. I'm Gabby Camacho with the Honolulu Authority for Rapid Transportation. So we have a huge update today. I'm sure you have all heard by now, but Skyline Segment Two is open. So from Pearl Harbor to Middle Street Kalih Transit Center. It's open to the public starting tomorrow, October sixteen. And this is adding an additional five miles and four new stations to the existing route. So now passengers can ride from East Kapolei to Middle Street on Skyline. So Skyline will now operate from four AM to ten thirty PM. And to celebrate the opening of Skyline, Skyline, the bus and the handy van will be free to ride on Saturday, October eighteen and Sunday, October nineteen from four AM to ten thirty PM. So riders still have to tap their holo-cards when, at the station gates and when entering the bus, but fares will not be deducted. So we're looking forward to seeing you all on Skyline. And for our next project update, we have the next neighborhood design workshop for Kuili Station or the Eva Lake Station next Thursday, October twenty-third from six to eight thirty PM at King David Kalakaua Middle School Cafeteria. And the address is eight-two-one Kalih Street. I'll put the address and a link to the webpage with more information on the chat, in the chat. But attendees will have the opportunity to interact with the project representatives, representatives themselves, ask questions, offer feedback regarding to the designs of the Kuili workshop, Kuili Station, sorry. If you're unable to attend the workshop in person, you can still provide your comments and feedback and send us your questions by using the link that I'll put in the chat or by reaching out to us directly at info@honolulutransit.org. So now I have some responses to questions. Oh, sorry, go ahead.
Sorry, I thought you were finished. Go ahead.
Oh, just a few responses to questions from last month. So the first question we received was, when is the next Heart audit? So the next audit being reported to the Heart Board is in November and the state audit should be before the end of the year. Heart undergoes several audits throughout the year. The main ones being the annual financial audit done by the Heart Board, the performance audit done periodically by the city or state auditor if directed by city council and state legislatures, and the audit of the Mass Transit Special Fund done quarterly by the State Department of Accounting and General Services, or DAGs. And we have also numerous internal audits. So the reports from the city, state and Heart Board are available to the public on the DAGs website, the city auditor website, or by request to Heart. And then the second question we received last month was, why is the guideway elevated so high? So the different heights of the guideway are needed for necessary clearances from other utilities and vehicles. So for example, if the guideway is required to be a certain distance from things like electrical cables, electrical poles, streetlights around the rail and even small and large vehicles. So like at the airport, a plane actually needs to go under the guideway in case of emergency. So the height of the guideway, whether it's twenty feet or fifty feet, is necessary depending on the surrounding conditions. So this concludes my presentation. If you would like to get into, in contact with us at Heart, you can email us at info@honolulutransit.org or call the project hotline at eight oh eight five six six two two nine nine and I'll put the info in the chat.
Any questions from the board? Ken?
Hi, thank you for your presentation. I had a, it's more of a procedural question. Because of the twenty going away and the route going to the airport, what buses are going to be going to Kehi Lagoon, if you happen to know that? And also for the audience here, people may probably listening who, you know, would be taking, you know, that bus to the airport. I'm sure that they would be now taking the rail, but the buses would be the way to get to Kehi Lagoon to get to the airport. So do you happen to know what buses that will be coming from this side here on the, on the east side, if you will, or Kalih to the airport?
I can look it up and I can put the link to the bus webpage on the chat. I know that they just announced a whole bunch of new lines and routes, so I can put that on the chat.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the board? Okay, go ahead.
Thank you, Evelyn Cullen. So in regards to the audit, do changes actually occur for the better once the audit is being presented to the public? Or, or things just continue as usual? Because from all the different segments, a lot of audits have gone on, but the bill just keeps climbing in the billions. So I don't see audit being very effective in change for the betterment of the community. Also, if you've noticed, near the airport in the Mapunapuna area, it has, the water has risen tremendously over the last several weeks. It's not just a little. It looks like an entire pond there. So what is Heart going to do to mitigate that issue in regards to the area because it is in a low-lying area, a flood zone? City always enforces all the private property owners to get flood insurance. What does the city plan on doing to protect taxpayers from being sued for liability in this case? Thank you.
One moment, I'm typing down your question.
Gabby, I can help address that later on when I, it's my turn or if you want during your time, but reliant on the chairs and their time.
Sure, councilmember and chair.
Chair, am I able to address that?
Yes, Radian, go ahead.
Okay, so Mapunapuna is owned by Damon Estates and Heart is not in the Mapunapuna area. So we have been trying to work with Damon Estates and the different business owners there by, the city placed duct valves in the state slash private property areas. But at the same time, we are hoping to come up with a, some kind of a partnership with some of the business owners there and to see if we could mitigate how much the tides rise up in Mapunapuna. And right now, the city has also gone back to Manaiiki and Muanaluas stream to hopefully assist in the possible water, water risen areas that come in from Maoka side. So, but from the Makai side, it's pretty tough because it really is just the king tides and us versus the ocean. So that's what I wanted to share and, but Heart, the city, the state has no real, I guess, way to address it without, without the compliance of Damon Estates and the business owners as well. Thank you.
I think that's, thank you so much, Radian. I appreciate that for the answer. Any other questions from the board? Any questions from the community or online? Dana?
Yes, my name is Dana Yap. I've ridden the rail a couple of times and I was just looking to see where the restrooms were that are public, to the public and not so much, just the people working there. Is there a public restroom for the rail?
Hi, Mr. Yap. So anybody in the public news the restrooms in the rail, you just need to contact a rail attendant, a station attendant, and then they can lead you to the restroom.
Any other questions from the community? Or online? Harina, thank you so much. Okay, we're going to move along to presentation. Thank you. Moving along to presentations, Ella Alexander. Did you need a few? Sorry, you know what, hold on. The firemen are present, if you can, someone to take, give the report for HFD.
Hello, good evening. I am firefighter Jacob Irvine over at the Kalih Station. Here we have our incident statistics for the month of September. So just a brief overview of fires had in the neighborhood or area. We've had two structure fires, two brush fires, seven nuisance fires, which could be considered rubbish fires, one cooking fire and seven activated alarms that resulted in no fires. Other emergencies responded to include a hundred and eighty-seven medical calls, four motor vehicle collisions involving a pedestrian, eighteen motor vehicle crash, crashes, zero mountain or ocean rescues and one hazardous material incident. Just going over some fire safety tips and announcements. It's Halloween season, so as far as seasonal decorations go, we want to be considerate of what we're putting up and leaving them on. So use lights that are in good repair. Always turn them off when you're not going to be home or when you're going to go to bed. Don't overload power ships, including attaching one power ship into another power ship. Watch your search protectors and extension cords. Use, oh, and never leave candles unattended in those jack-o'-lanterns. Secure those lighters and matches away from the kids. That's about all we got. If you guys have any questions for us at this time.
Any questions from the board? Any questions from the community or online? Go ahead, Principal Larkin.
Hi, buddy. Dan Larkin, proud principal of Kalih, I just wanted to give a big thanks to these guys. We had a fire in the riverbed just a few days or a couple of weeks ago. In the riverbed just a few days or a couple of weeks ago. That's one of your brush fires that you talked about. From first smoke to fire out was like under ten minutes. So good job. Thank you very much for protecting our school. Appreciate it.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Okay.
You're ready to go?
Okay, so now we're gonna, thank you so much for the firemen, firefighters. Uh, we're gonna move on to the presentations, pesticide resolution, and this is from the intern for the office of the representative, Amy Prusso.
Sorry. Aloha, chair, board members, members of the community. My name is Olivia Eagle and I am from the office of Representative Prusso, as well as Climate Future Forum. We are in partnership with them. Uh, we're here to present to you folks today about pesticides in Hawaii and how they affect your neighborhood, as well as other neighborhoods around across our Ina. So to start off on a baseline, pesticides are substances that are designed to kill invader pests. This can include weeds, fungi, rodents and insects. These can be chemicals synthetic or biological, and synthetic are often more toxic than biological. Um, we're also gonna be talking today about general use pesticides and restricted use pesticides. GUPs are referred to, general use is referred to as GUPs and restricted use is referred to as RUPs. An example of general use would be Roundup. So what are RUPs? RUPs differ from GUPs because these require a certification for the purchase and use. These are restricted because they cause severe environmental and health, um, human health damage. And these are most commonly spread in north central Oahu as well as west Hawaii. And in twenty eighteen, the Hawaii State Legislature announced Act forty-five, which stated that in twenty nineteen, RUP applicators must report their usage. To the Hawaii Department of Agriculture and Biosecurity annually, and this act also implemented a hundred-foot buffer zones around schools. So some examples we have of RUPs are 130 and metamethium. Um, this data was taken in twenty nineteen. So in twenty nineteen, over a hundred seventy-five thousand pounds of 130 was sprayed. This is a groundwater contaminant. It is highly prone to drift, and it has also been linked to cancer. So it is a carcinogen. And it is toxic if inhaled. It can cause respiratory impacts, fizziness, nausea and vomiting. And we also have metamethium and in twenty nineteen, thirty thousand pounds of this was sprayed. It is highly prone to drift. This can drift up to a mile. It's also toxic if inhaled. It can cause. Weakness, blurred vision, cramps, pupil constriction, sweating, lowering the pulse and muscle tremors. So here we have some exemptions to Act forty-five, neonictonoids and experimental field trials. Neonictonoids, also known as neonix, are currently used to fight the coconut rhinoceros beetle, which is invasive species here in Hawaii. Um, and these are not currently classified as an RUP. They're actually still classified as a GUP, so it is not subject to reporting. And these are very toxic to our native birds and pollinators and especially our aquatic life here in Hawaii. And these are systemic, which means that is placed into the seeds or the roots of the plant instead of just sprayed. So um our research shows that actually ninety percent of these neonictonoids end up in the environment and only ten percent stays on the plant. Um, and so then we also have experimental field trial trials, whereas major chemical companies such as Bayer, also known as Monsanto. And Syngenta can test these GMO crops on Hawaiian lands um without completing an EIS. Uh, which could have adverse consequences on our agricultural resources. And yes, these may be exempt from reporting, so it's easier for them to spray in larger amounts and ignore the rules. So as we can see, Act forty-five is a good start, but it is currently insufficient for our needs. Our current buffer zones around schools are only a hundred feet, but earlier metamethium can travel of up to a mile. Um, and this also is gonna nullify the Federal Insecticide, Fungicide and Rodenticide Act. Which states that uh applicators are legally required to follow these rules on the label. But there is very little oversight and reporting. Um, for example, applicators aren't required to put the time in which they applied. So if it's a really windy day. Maybe um they applied when it was really windy, close to an air school, and so that um. Pesticide can travel far. And then also, uh, so therefore it nullifies the school buffer zone there too, because it's traveling um into schools under a hundred feet. And also there is no environmental testing, so these companies and applicators can destroy the land and pass the problems on to the next owner. So there is not a lot of accountability or credibility there either. So here we have some graphs for you guys. Um, these actually were created by HOPA, the Hawaii Alliance and Progressive Action Organization. At the top, we have the form that applicators have to fill out annually. This is gonna include, the green includes what they actually have to fill out. So this is like the product name, the active ingredients, the total usage, the area treated. And then in the white is what they don't have to fill out. So um. The time applied, the crop or site that they applied in, the pest that they're trying to kill. And then on the bottom left here, we have a map of Oahu. And we can see here the road is gonna be those highly concentrated areas of where these RUPs were sprayed back in twenty nineteen. Um, and then on the right, we have your guys' neighborhood. So thankfully, there were no RUP usage here, but it is still important to point out, especially. Because RUPs are highly prone to drift. And then here, we also have a map of the school zones here in your neighborhood. So the black dots are gonna represent actual schools. And then that yellow circle around that is gonna represent the a hundred-foot buffer zone. So as you can see, it's very small. So here we have some current ideas floating around in our office right now. We want better reporting to ensure more detailed and accurate reporting from these guys. We want to increase the buffer zones um more than a hundred feet. Uh, larger punishments and fines for illegal use, also classifying neonix as an RUP. Um, having in mandated environmental testing, especially when applicators are selling this land because no one really knows what's going on. And then also having transparency and labeling, just because something says Hawaii ground doesn't necessarily. Mean it's organic, but it can be misleading if it does say Hawaii ground. So. Okay, so how you guys can help, consider adopting resolutions. Our office has drafted a resolution, which I believe we are going over later. Um, also, share your experience and testify, hold community meetings, sign up for emails, contact your elected officials, such as your representatives. Educate about pesticide use in schools and also stand with farmers to support them into transitioning into more organic practices. And then we also wanted to share about Rewilder Campus. This is an organization specifically designed. To removing pesticides in schools. They've worked with Punahoe High School in Manoa to get all the Roundup off that campus. Um, and they're holding meetings and bootcamps. So this QR code will get you to their website, and it's just a good way to stay informed and educated about pesticides specifically in the use of schools. And then um they also focus on organic land care, biodiversity and health. And then here we have some more QR codes. This is the HOPA website. It will take you straight to their website. Also some Canada resources we've created for you guys. And also their map stories, series, which is um where the earlier maps came from. It's like an interactive map. And that is all I have for you folks, but I'm available to stick around for questions. Thank you.
Spectacular. Thank you so much. Any questions from the board? Evelyn?
Thank you for your presentation. I really um was informed. Um, I'm kinda concerned now um what's out there, especially for the Department of Hawaiian Homelands. They just had recently awarded a hundred and fifteen agricultural lots on the island of Maui. Um, when I was there present presently, um I had questioned them about things, but you had just shared then, because what if people were organic growers as well? Um, what then, what can they do to buffer themselves away from those that choose to use um chemicals to um pour their crops? So. Um, maybe as um a. Nonprofit? What are you guys called again? I'm sorry.
So um I'm interning from Representative Prusso's.
Oh, Prusso's office, okay. I think I've attended several of her talks in um. Near UH, but anyway, um. If you guys could get in contact with um Kelly Watson and work with with um DHHL. Cause um something huge is coming up soon, and there's also gonna be another fifty ag lots being awarded to um DHHL on island. Um, so, thank you.
Any other questions from the board? Ken?
Hi, thank you for your presentation. Um, two questions. Um, you mentioned about organic. Is that codified somewhere in terms of what that actually means? I might be just a layman on this one, but because you're mentioning, you know, uh, that Hawaii ground is not organic, what's? What is organic in in codified terms? Is there is there uh definition for it?
Like uh organic practices away from using pesticides?
Just what organic means. There's a, there's a term for it. So like, I just understand, I'm trying to understand the policy here, because there's a lot of motion here, what's going on, but I'm also thinking from like. Uh, does that involve the USDA if it's dealing with school or is it DOE from, you know, from the uh state side? Also for dealing with things like the pesticides used for rhinoceros beetle. Um, and what would then be the alternative to deal with that? So those are the kind of questions I'm asking. It's not that I'm against it. I I just wanna ask it from those types of questions. Uh, very procedurally, okay, so if we don't have this, then what can we then use? And then also, if we're using the term organic, what does that actually mean? Uh, if you want me to reframe Ken, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, I believe he's trying to look for the legal definition of what organic means.
Organic would just be like not using um synthetic or. Biological pesticides, I would um assume, and not uh causing severe environmental health damage. Um, so some organic op like. Away, transition away from pesticides would be um, we found that vinegar and lemongrass works. Pretty well for deterring pests um instead of Roundup. Um, but that's a, that's a good question. I can also take that back to my office as well. Thank you.
Any other questions from the board? Any questions from the community or online? Karyna, thank you so much. Tell Amy I said hi. Moving along to Roy Miyahira, City and County Homeless Coordinator.
Evening, everybody. Uh, Principal Larkin, thank you very much for hosting. Madam Chair, thank you very much for the invitation. The Neighborhood Board, once again, hello again. Might have been about six months when I first started. I was uh in our Kapalama Hale to see you both, so thanks again for inviting me. Uh, before I start with the presentation about. How many beds and how many slots that we're building since twenty twenty-two, I do wanna talk a bit more about our strategy. I'm a bit more informed um in the last eight months about where we are as a city and county. Now, these strategies were built about, uh, I think in twenty twenty-two. So they stood the test of time so far in the last three years, and they continue to, I guess, again, come to life as we start to progress and build more beds. Strengthen our responses to a crisis uh from a homeless perspective, to integrate healthcare, to uh. Add more levers to prevent people from going to homelessness, homeless state. Those parts of the strategy are working, but what I want to talk about today is more about what people ask the most of. Do you have enough beds to handle the amount of homeless who want to go into an indoor type of solution? Uh, in our city and county of Honolulu? Okay, so this is a presentation that was just built recently, and we might skip around just due to the amount of time that we have. Melissa, you're gonna drive this for me, go to the next slide. Uh, if you can go to the next slide too, it's a little bit busy here. Okay, so the landscape always changes uh based on probably the judiciary. Whether it's gonna be a local type of legislature or a state, or in this case, sometimes federal. You're gonna have a landscape of that impacts homelessness quite often. Now, these cases, I can go into detail about maybe a little bit later on, maybe if you wanna call me, but. They go back and forth from how we enforce people who are homeless, who might be. Sitting or lying on a public sidewalk or in public spaces. It goes back and forth to how we are enforcing them, what we're allowed to do. So in the first case with Martin Boise, this Boise, um it was more of the enforcement of folks who are homeless. Um, prohibiting them from anti-camping, okay? Goes back again now to an ACEO case back in Honolulu. And then finally, the Supreme Court rules that you are allowed, the governments are allowed to enforce these ordinances. For people who are camping on public spaces, uh not including parks because parks have rules, let's say a sidewalk, or maybe even a street. It goes back and forth until we get to now, where we have the uh Trump executive order that people might have heard of just recently. Now, what I take out, what the city takes out of the executive order is this. It focuses a lot on probably moving people or um straightening out. Maybe the blight that we have on streets and cleaning them up. And some people talk about sweeping homeless to another state, another city, another neighborhood. Now, here in our city, under Mayor Blanchard's administration, we don't believe in the word sweep. I mean, we believe in enforcing the rules and the laws that we have, but we also couple these engagements with the homeless with outreach. And solutions for them to move to a spot that we might have, an EVILAC. Folks that I know in this area know EVILAC really well, and that we have many beds there, and I'm gonna get to that in a moment. Uh, we'll keep going now to the slides, Melissa. So this is a picture of, or actually I should say illustration of where we were in twenty twenty-two. Most folks would see an emergency shelter as maybe what we saw in Honu, where we have tents for people who need just like immediate stabilization. Where they have nowhere to go, they might not even have documents, but they just need a place to lay their head for one day up to maybe thirty to sixty days. The next piece is transitional housing, and you can see the number that were built there and how we've gone from twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-three. Those, that's the next step up, where we offer a little bit more supportive services and start drilling down as to what you actually really need. It's like. Now, what we've tried to do here with the city is, instead of putting a lot of homeless, and this model did work, maybe the last five years in other cities. And based on different type of governments. This housing first model did work. But at some point in time, if you cannot supply the amount of supportive services or wraparound services as people. Talk about, if you can't support them, sustain that, then the housing first model falls away. The housing first model is finding a building, a facility, where we can bring. People who are experiencing homelessness into that one building and try our best to add wraparound services. Now, you're adding everybody into one building, very, very difficult after a amount of time. So our city has devised a strategy to find. People who have specific needs, that we're gonna have specific flavors of beds for them. Just trying to do a little bit more, we call market segmentation. And adding beds in this way. Next slide. So the first one everyone knows about is Honu. It's our tented shelters, as some people might call it. It went from Kapalae to the Blaisdell Park. Now it's at the old stadium. Um, these numbers, I'll just run through them very quickly, but it just tells you there are about forty slots for people to, again. Stabilize, um, get their documents ready. Uh, understand that they're gonna be going to a next step very soon, that they're gonna be very motivated once they stay there. And you're gonna see that seven hundred eighty number, seven hundred eighty numbers is the amount of people that go through that place. Uh, through uh through a year. Next spot, next slide. So what it's gonna do is just gonna start adding, okay, the different beds of many flavors, we call it. Emergency shelters, transitional housing, um beds, and then the next three, which is what we started to add. Next slide. Ymitulapiha is a detox center, again, addressing those who have substance use disorders. I'm not sure if, again, in my eight months here, I'm not sure if we have too many out here uh on this island, but this is important for folks to stabilize. The next step, obviously, is gonna be the most important once they get out of that detox center. Next slide. Again, adding to now the specialty treatment beds. Next slide. There's Makaha Permanent Supportive Housing. I've been there. You're seeing families there. Uh, next slide. We see it adding a little bit more to our tally of affordable housing beds. Next slide, Melissa. I think you're getting my rhythm now. Um, Liyahi Behavior Health Medical Respite. Now, this takes care of those who have severe mental illness. If anyone knows and would like that, or have been in a respite where folks are needing help, is a very complex, complicated. Long type of treatment that sometimes never gives in. So these folks are doing angels' works out there in Diamond Head area. Again, adding more to our tally. Next slide. Our Behavior Health Crisis in EVILAC, again. Referencing those who have severe mental illness. You're seeing how many beds that we have and how many people could be cycling through. Next slide. Seeing them adding to these special flavors that we're identifying as specialty treatment beds. Next slide. Waikiki Vista, which is almost always full. This is um off of Kapilani. You're seeing how they're adding more to the families and the, uh, excuse me, the affordable housing beds too. Ala Medical Respite, you might see this near Ala Park. Um, the alley, you're very familiar with this place. You walk by it almost every day. You're seeing that people have cancer, who have kidney dialysis, who's very. that people who have cancer, who have kidney dialysis, who have very serious medical conditions, who are taken care of here. Uh, yes, it's the former First Hawaiian Bank, Ala Medical Respite. Okay. So we're going to keep going, Melissa. You can cycle through slowly and see how these are adding up and tallying to the specialty type of beds that we're trying to add, even where now in Ha'ula with families. We're trying to spread ourselves as a city and county wider around this, around this island. Right, so we're going to stop right there and I'm out, I'm going to finish my presentation very quickly here. That number there, I wouldn't call it staggering, but it's a lot better than it was in twenty two and twenty three. The number of the blue box there just tells you as to how many times people cycle through. Bed doesn't stay a bed with one person in it for twelve months. We try, again, we try to move those people through our system to get them better. They might be reuniting with their fam. Right, we're going to the next step of treatment. But five hundred eight, eight hundred eighty-three uses of these beds, of these treatment centers, I think is where we always want to be. Thank you, Melissa. Again, um, this illustrates, this illustrates where we are in twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five versus the two years before. You see we're increasing in emergency shelters because we know, we've seen the data behind folks who are experiencing being on the brink, not able to make rent, um have food insecurity. There's just a lot of folks who are just in dire need of a place to rest their head. It can't always be the families. But again, adding to the special treatments and affordable permanent housing is where we're going. We want to keep adding to this, especially when it comes down to severe mental illness and substance use disorders. I know you all have seen that. I know you've all seen the, the person named Roy who's out there who just is out of their mind, so to speak, or just can't get a grip on life. They're going through an episode. Um, we're using, again, our city and county services like CORE, and we want to do some outreach and medical treatment. We're using HPD and the Community Police Department and Community Police Teams. Um, we're using every lever that we can pull, even with IHS to be there to try and get these folks to see some type of light in their life. Okay. I think that does it.
Okay, um, any questions from the board? I believe that's Evelyn.
Hi.
Hi.
I'd like to say you're doing a great job. I've never seen um this approach before. And so this is worth watching and, and taking a look at the hard data that comes of that. Uh, my only uh question to you would be at any given time, wherever a individual is within that spectrum, that they can turn around and say, not due to, I mean, I would say it is, it possibly could be due to their mental illness, decide, I'm out. Have you had that? And um a lot of people will come into the program and then decide, I don't want this anymore, and then they leave. So then that'll leave a hole for someone else to come back in. So is there any type of data that is being collected about people that come in and actually sort of, what you might call graduate from this program?
Yes, there, um, there is data, uh, national data and data that's distilled down to our island and even our estate. Um, closer to home, we do have a data with Honu because, again, emergency shelters tell us a little bit more as to whether you want in and you want to stay in and you're motivated to move on or graduate to the next level. But we do have folks who just say, I just cannot. I just need more time where I was before. Uh, I enjoyed it more and plus I don't like the rules, you know, so it's and, and that's why outreach is so important or in case management, because you have to find them at the most vulnerable situation where when they say yes, we have to grab them um and try to nurture them so they see it right. Besides seeing across the street, that seems to be a little bit more tempting in their own life. We do have data like that.
Any other questions from the board? Ken? Lynn? Ken?
Hi, thank you. Um, just along the same question. So you mentioned a lot of the different types of housing, I don't say accommodations, but the different types of things are there. To your point, and let's bring up ACT, how does that work in that whole framework? Because usually that's an individual, that's a garden item. I know IHS is trying to pull at that. So how does that work in relation to some of those places? Um, and a person there based upon a ACT or garden item?
Um, so that would take a court order uh for someone to get enacted, uh, assisting committee injectable or treatment. Um, IHS does use that. Um, they understand that there has to be case managed for quite a bit of time. Uh, I'm not sure how um things really come out, whether they have data on it, but I can ask about it. But it is not part of a program when you go into um a, a program in EVILAC that has fifty beds. Um, most of those folks are, I guess, stabilized to the point where we can see them moving forward. It might take two, three years to do that. But uh someone who has that type of need, um, I think takes an IHS who has some expertise behind that or even our core team in the city and county who might have some capacity to do that because I do have a, a MD director who runs that and, and does know how to navigate that system. But again, it does take a court order for someone to be uh receiving that type of treatment.
The reason I was asking that was because the process of it was more because the people you're mentioning who are on there, for the most part, it seems like they have the reasoning decisional capacity to say, yes, I want to go and do this or I want to be part of this, and they may or may not leave. But then you have individuals who don't even realize the reality that they're in, they're on the street.
Yeah.
How do we then deal? Because those are the ones that, you know, I, I would say, honestly, I don't want to say in a bad way, but the most dangerous are the ones who are the most unstable. And we have a lot of those types of individuals. So how does this work with that framework? And then the new EP that allows us from, from, you know, from the Trump administration to deal or, or from my understanding, address those type of issues of individuals who would, could just say no, for example, like what she's saying, and just be out, you know, aside from a, a garden item.
Um, yeah, they, in, in the, the Trump executive order, he speaks about involuntary commitment, civil commitment. Um, we are trying to use that to understand, that's number one, how we apply that and build the props, process around it and operationalize around it. Um, my take on how it would work uh in the field is we'll have our core team. Um, go out and do some outreach and start assessing someone who is probably um, could be a danger to himself or herself or to others around them. Um, they could put a call into a clinician. Uh, psychiatrists who can make the call um to determine whether we can bring this person in um involuntarily, but would have to go through a number of doors to do that. Uh, HPD would also be involved, of course, uh in case something does happen. So again, um, Ken, I think those are many doors before we got to kind of get there. Um, we're still trying to operationalize that. But it is on our radar to do it.
Any other questions from the board? Deosa?
Hi, Chair Deosa. Hi, so piggybacking off of what Ken was asking, so how do, how does one um, how do you say, go through the process of having a homeless person go through the flavors? So speaking specifically about Beckley Street, there's a family there that's been living at the bathroom for over a year now. HPD has been coming and going, um, trying to clear them out, but it's gotten to the point where um, since they live there, you know, they kind of just let them go. Um, even the construction guys who see them every morning, they let them go. Um, the family there, they have cell phones, so I mean, they're pretty, they, they have um, they're pretty stable. Mostly, sometimes they're a little spicy. But so how do we, what, what would we do? What is the process to get them into um the flavors?
Um, again, the flavors of the beds is always going to be voluntary.
What will you do in terms of outreach?
Yeah, so the process normally starts with HPD. Maybe HPD might feel the call if it becomes a situation where there um, there might be some violence involved or there's some suspicion. But once we normally get the call, we try to go with outreach and, and IHS is our first call uh because this is their territory. And probably in tandem with IHS, we call CORE because they also have a, an outreach type of program, but they also administer, again, medical, medical treatment. So we try to double down on that, and if they're in the area, they have routes, that is CORE. They're in District One pretty often. I've seen their data. Um, if you feel like Ulik or another street just needs, or Beckley needs a little bit more attention, not from HPD, but from our core group, um, you can call CORE, um, seven six eight seven six eight C O R E. I believe it's two six seven three, I believe, you know.
Any other questions from the board? Any questions from the community? Um, if you can approach the mic and then need to state your name, please. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Aaron. My question is, out of the amount of people that you are performing outreach with or getting in contact with, what is the demand as like a percentage of people that are actually wanting the services? That there's a need to put, to bring them through the program, I suppose, versus how many people actually want to go through the program once they're approached?
I think IHS or KWO, those type of outreach programs would be better suited to answer that question. But I'll speak from personal experience and talking to those who are outreach on, uh, in the field. Um, people have mentioned one out of ten. Some people have mentioned one out of twenty. Some people have mentioned one out of fifty. Again, I think it's all over the board. It all, I think, depends on at what point you catch them in that moment of clarity. Maybe not their bottom, maybe not their top, but moment of uh, I want to go back home, or I want to go back to how I used to be, when I enjoyed living somewhere and just being um productive in society. So it takes a lot of appeal to folks, but I can ask that question of your providers.
Any other questions from the community? James, if you can step up to the mic. Thank you.
Thank you, Roy. Uh, James, Neighborhood Board sixteen, Secretary. Uh, Roy, my question to you is, do you coordinate with Salvation Army uh for beds? Because they have a lot more beds available.
Uh, I don't, um, I believe the state does coordinate with them. I do believe IHS, I believe Queens partners with them. But it's something I should know and find out. I'll look that up for you. Uh, I'm out, but I will email you.
Alan?
Right on. Question, uh, you know, I, I seen a stat, statistics that you had five thousand eight hundred plus or it uh went through the system. Uh, my question was if they had uh individuals that went through the system more than once?
No doubt, um, no doubt there are folks who just maybe come out of the program. I wouldn't say prematurely or prematurely, truly, but they feel that they've found where they, they want to be.
Only, only once.
And not on that figure. In fact, that's a very conservative figure. That figure could be about maybe twenty percent more. I'm just throwing maybe a number out there, but we don't count the maybe duplicates. At least we don't. Um, I do not know that HMAS, um, Partners in Care or the Continuum of Care does have a statistic like that. Uh, that talks about duplicates and to me, that's fine, uh, that people are really finding themselves, losing themselves and going back into our system.
And Ken, you had a follow-up question?
Yeah, I have a question. Um, because I was looking at the, I was part of a point in time count for a long time ago. Um, Region One, that is H3RC, if I'm not mistaken. Region Two is where IHS is when it comes to the actual contracting areas. So for example, from my understanding, like here, this is all H3RC aside from IHS, which has their buildings here, but their contract is further in town. Is that correct?
Um, there are now two providers in, in, on Oahu. It is KWO, um, and it is IHS.
So those are the only two for the entire county, including this area?
For the island.
For the island. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I, I believe the districts are split by outreach. It's not split up by police districts, right?
I don't know, again, police districts. I was looking at the point in time.
Point in time, yeah, so it's a little bit different how they're.
So is that another type of way that they're split?
I'm not sure how they're going to do the point in time count, but they're split, um, I think what the former provider had, IHS had taken that over. They would be in the District One, Police District, District One.
Okay, yeah, I'm not, yeah, I'm not using police district. I'm using the region based, the point in time count mapping that they have. Um, that's okay. That's, yeah, I was just curious on that. So they took over, IHS took over where I, H3RC had before. Is that what I understand from what you're saying?
That area in the urban core area, yes.
Okay, thank you.
If, as we're moving forward with this, for acronyms, because people at home or those that watch are not quite aware of what the acronyms.
Health Harm Reduction Center was H3RC. I'm sorry about that.
No, and IHS is Institute of Human Services.
Thank you so much. People do watch and they might not know the acronyms. Any other questions from the community? Dale?
Okay, I've been told many homeless, they don't have ID, no social security card, driver's license, birth certificate. Can you help them get that back by some process and how is that done? I was told it has to be sworn to statement by a notary and they won't do it.
Um, our Honu group helps them um get their documentation right. Um, I think they go as far as, well, they won't go to DMV and do that, but once they come into our emergency shelters, do their best to make sure that they have their ID and to just um make them whole so they can go to the next step. They make a lot of phone calls from Honu from these tents uh to our customer service departments and DMV to make sure these folks can move on properly. We just will not leave them without making sure they can move properly. They just can't do it.
And the cards, one more question.
Hi, I'm just going to piggyback off that. If Honu, that, that's what the program is called, right? If they are unable to provide any like birth certificates or any form of identification, you can also look to Top To the Top Hawaii, is that the organization we call, yes, To the Top Hawaii? And My Sister's Keeper, that's another nonprofit. Uh, both nonprofits, if you can't get it through the government, they can help assist you um as nonprofits. Um, yeah. They do a lot of outreach. Thank you.
That's good to know. I do want to add that part of Department of Community Services that does operate with, with Honu or does run Honu also has a department called Team or Work Hawaii that handles, uh, is actually the warm handoff for those who do need documentation, job scale type of development, even rental assistance, like with the Rent to Work Program. So we do have many levers to pull in the city.
And Principal Larkin, did you have any comments, concerns or questions for the homeless encampment that's been in the Stream area?
Thank you very much. I didn't want to interrupt earlier. Um, so we've had a fairly um pervasive homeless encampment right here in the, the Stream Bed for multiple years. Um, and the biggest problem that we have is that crosses multiple jurisdictional lines. Um, some of its own, the property that is on, some of it's owned by the um city, some is owned by the state, some is owned by DLNR, and some of it is owned by Richard Lane Apartments. How can we overcome those kind of things in a quicker fashion um to get those people services? And also make sure that they are not um encamped right by a school where they have, obviously, since the fire, and this is the third one this last year, um, caused potential harm to kids.
Thank you for your question. Um, in about a month, we are working on a project in Waipahu Plantation Village. Some people might know about that. It's right behind Waipahu El. Um, again, it might be the same situation as to many of these schools do face where people are experiencing homelessness are right behind the school. And uh, obviously it does serve as a distraction. Um, it makes parents probably very nervous about where their kids are, whether they're safe even on recess or even for walking home from school. Um, what we do when there's a jurisdictional type of situation is what you would probably think. We partner with our state. We partner with DLNR, um, their parts of the waterways. Um, we've done that in Diamond Head. We're going to do it in Waipahu. Um, I feel confident that we have the relationships that were built, number one, from our governor to our mayor, to executives who get along and see eye to eye to make sure that everybody um within their stead works the same way. So the collaboration is going to be there. Just let me know where they are and, and we'll send some people out to just to evaluate and start working on a plan.
Thank you so much, and we're going to move along. Thank you so much, Roy, for attending here and giving that awesome presentation. Uh, we're going to move along to Global Preservation Initiative by Aaron McGee.
Aloha. Mahalo for the opportunity to speak. My name is Aaron. I am the Executive Director for Global Preservation Initiative. We are a local organization focused on restoring and preserving in the community, our environment, as well as. focused on restoring and preserving in the community, our environment, as well as educating students in the classrooms about the importance of our oceans and plastic pollution. One of our ongoing restoration sites is at Sand Island State Recreation Area, where we've been working since January of two thousand twenty-three. Next slide. So some history, uh, an overview of the area. Sand Island is an artificial land formation, um, created by the dredging of the Kehe Lagoon. In the nineteen forties, it served as an internment camp for over six hundred Japanese Americans. And after that, became a neglected dumping site for industrial waste. In the seventies, it was occupied by around a hundred Hawaiian families who, um, they were developing on the coastline, creating, uh, like a fishing community essentially. And in nineteen eighties, when the state claimed it as a state park, they were evicted and their properties were destroyed. Today, Sand Island is a fourteen acre, or there's a section of the island is a fourteen acre state park that we are working in, um, and it serves as critical green space in the heart of the industrial district and a vital coastline access for what is otherwise not really accessible coastline. Our work in the area, like I said, began in January of two thousand twenty-three. Uh, I had no idea that Sand Island actually had a beach or a park. I'm born on Oahu, born and raised. Um, but I've only come to Sand Island to pick up my parents' car when it was towed. Uh, but upon my first walkthrough of the site and our first cleanup event, I met the Hawaii Softball Foundation, who has been leasing a portion of the park, developing, uh, sports fields to host tournaments for softball teams nationally and locally. And they expressed a strong need for support in restoring and beautifying the area, because it's suffered from decades of neglect. So the first area that we focus on is, next slide, is cleanups. We've held twenty-four cleanup events in the space, bringing through a thousand volunteers, contributing over twenty-six hundred hours of stewardship in the park with over nine thousand pounds of trash removed. There is still many thousands of pounds backlog in that area, although it is getting visibly cleaner. Next, what we do is reclaim the space, which is largely dominated and overgrown by invasives, primarily the Longthorn Kaave, which makes it super uh, inaccessible, you know, to sit or walk around or move through the park. And so we've cleared over seventy-four thousand square feet of invasives, which frees up space for native plants to go in the ground. Our two, next slide, main projects in the area that you can see highlighted in yellow, next slide. Um, the first one is around the perimeter of these softball fields. This is an out of uh, date satellite image, but next slide, you can see this project started in November of two thousand twenty-three with the intention of, uh, planting shade trees around the softball field so that families will eventually have some shade. And so you could see in that, that previous photo, um, how barren the soil is here. And then next slide, this is thirteen months later with irrigation, how uh, lush this space has come. So this, uh, we put seventy-six trees around these softball fields for that event. Next slide. The other project we just started this year is around the shower facilities. Next slide. So the idea is that when people are using these showers, there is, it's on a slight incline, so the water is running down and pooling and creating, um, a hotspot for vegetation, but it's all, it's just weeds and invasives that have been growing there. So we cleared out those invasives and put in twenty-four native shrubs. Um, these are Pohinahina in these photos, and um, they are being actively taken care of by the water from the showers. This, we came, that was in April, the first day of that project. In June, we came back with the community to install some protective fencing. Next slide. So this is a rope and, uh, wooden fence. And this whole area is completely cleared out of invasives. It used to be, you wouldn't be able to see the, the coastline or the water. There was fifteen foot tall Kaave trees all in the way. Um, and the, the development of this project, um, so we started in April for Earth Day, came back in June for Ocean's Day, and we'll be back in November for Hawaii Arbor Day. We'll be filling this space with a hundred and forty additional low-lying native shrubs and then putting forty more shade trees, native shade trees around the softball field perimeter. Next slide. So all of our work happens in partnership and collaboration with the community, because this is a community space. Our main partnerships are with the Department of Land and Natural Resources, their Division of State Parks, who we have been adopting the space from to lead the restoration efforts over the past three years, as well as the Hawaii Softball Foundation, who works in the park and provides connections to the community and operational support. Next slide. Our vision for this space is, uh, many of our events so far have been with private groups. So bringing in local schools or clubs or businesses who want private days for their, their employees, but we really wanna open it up more to the community. So we'll be having our next community workday on November eighth, like I mentioned. And then in two thousand twenty-six, having bimonthly community workdays. So these are large events. In the past, we've seen between, um, fifty to a hundred and twenty community members show up at these events. So like I said, those will be bimonthly throughout two thousand twenty-six. Um, and I envision that going well, so I'm hoping to continue that. To continue the effort of removing litter, clearing invasives, and then continuing to plant trees in the space. I'd invite you and would love to see you at our next event in November, and if not, coming to a future one in the following years. If you'd like to set up a private event or have, uh, ideas for partnerships in the space, please let us know as well. You can just look us up online. Global Preservation Initiative, and find us on social media or our website. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Awesome. Thank you. Um, any questions from the board? No questions from the board? Oh, um, Evelyn?
Hi, thank you very much for what you're doing. Um, the partnership that you have with the D L N R as well as the state parks. Um, for, for someone in the public that's trying to navigate through the system of the state parks, I've gotten very little response from them. Um, so to see that an organization like yours has, um, pukered through, so to speak, um, and has made a, a, a big difference for the space. Um, I, I'm fifty-seven and I've used that space my entire life. So everything that you had just spoken about, how it was made and, and the Hawaiian families on the shoreline, I can attest to that, actually being there, because I was um, present during that time period. I would also like to suggest that maybe you can get, um, the canoe clubs involved and participating as well. Um, as well as our, um, homeless friends that live within the, the clusters of, between the, the paddlers, as well as the park, to maybe take some sort of ownership rather than adding to the, the cleanup that, um, all of these organizations, um, participate in. Maybe they can have some buy-in and, um, help pick up after themselves, you know, so, um, I don't know how safe that could be. Um, for your organization, but, um, I'm also part of a club there, uh, Imiola. My, my kids paddle for them, so, um, they are very strong advocates about the community as well, so, um, I could also take that back and share that. Um, and, yeah, Sand Island is, um, is close to my heart. So, uh, what I see, what you're doing is very good. I don't know if you were the one that, the email that was coming through at one point about redoing the, um, I guess that, the tower as well as the bunkers. Was that from you? Okay, that was somebody else, um, the G seventy, so, um, but keep up the good work and, and public input is important, because I've, like, the private partnership with the, the baseball fields, it's, it's primarily all private, right? It has been, right? Private schools, that's similar to the public schools, right?
One of our, uh, really noteworthy partnerships is with Kalakaua Middle School, where we've been educating for now three years, all of their sixth graders and then their seventh graders. And then we took the seventh graders out to the park last year for our cleanup event. And those kids picked up seventeen hundred pounds of trash in two hours. It was phenomenal day. Um, so we're gonna be continuing and building on that project. Um, but there is absolutely room to improve our relationship with the community, which is why we're opening up these workdays so that we can have heavier, more heavy influence from the community in stewarding their own space, because this is obviously not my park or the softball people's park or the D L N R's park.
Thank you, thank you so much for what you're doing. And, and because of the condominiums in downtown Honolulu, the makeup of the people that now use the park, like you said, you never knew it existed until you had to go and pick up your parents' cars. Um, so because of the high rises, it's been different now. People, um, which is a good thing, because we need diversity within our park. Um, just everybody, just to Malama the Park as well. That's my main thing. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Any questions from the community? Well, Pat, Pat, go ahead, Pat.
Thank you, Chairperson. Um, Mr. Aaron, I'd like to say thank you too for our community, that what you guys are doing there. So we would love to be a part of that, November eighth. What time does it start?
It's gonna be from nine A M to twelve.
Nine A M to.
Obviously, come as you please.
Okay.
Do as much work as you feel comfortable with, and that will be in partnership with the Kakuahawai Foundation, coming down from Haleiwa to support that effort. So there's going to be some other nonprofits there with education booths and outreach activities. There's also gonna be a softball tournament happening in the park that day, so you'll get to see the fields in action, watch the kids play. That's gonna be a pretty exciting day.
Yeah, I believe, uh, our Neighborhood Board would be glad to get involved with this as a community service outreach, and I'll let Shirley Temple know that we'll come on by and do, get, get involved with this. Thank you.
One more comment, sorry. Thank you again for what you're doing. Honestly, thank you for doing God's work. Uh, besides the eighth, when else do you guys have your, um, cleanups?
So in two thousand twenty-six, it's going to be January, April, June, September, and November, I believe.
Oh, so you have four times?
Is that?
Yeah.
It should be five. Maybe I miscounted, but they will be on our website as well, um, so you can see them as they get posted.
And, um, per month, you do it, you said bimonthly?
So these are gonna be bimonthly workdays, so that's kind of the, it's five, five throughout the year. Um, and, but we also do private events in between then, so we typically do about one event a month. We worked across the island as well, so this is just one of our restoration sites. But as an organization, we're doing about one of these cleanup events a month, and a lot of that are with private groups, which we've brought a lot through Sand Island.
Just another real quick comment. Um, it's global, so where else around the globe?
Sure, absolutely. So the idea behind that is that we're using Hawaii as a model for what's happening across the world. The, the, um, idea of Hawaii losing its self-sufficiency and being really impacted by global invasive species and plastic pollution from around the world washing up on our shores is the, um, inspiration behind that. But we have connected with partners and volunteers and students in Canada, Guatemala, England, um, Spain. And I'm not sure what else. Australia. I, yeah, we'd have to look at the spreadsheet to know what the, the rest of those are.
Um, any questions from the community? Dana?
Name's Dana, yeah. I just insert, I was considering H P U. H P U, is it, is the baseball field and the softball field different? Because they considered Sand Island as their home field.
Okay, um, in regards to who is dominantly using the softball fields, is that the question? Um, I do know that there are, there probably, H P U is probably using the space, and we've worked with H P U a number of times at events, but there are, there is a huge variety of people using those softball fields, so it's probably, I'm not a representative of the softball foundation, so I'm hesitant to speak on who is who is using it, but it is a wide variety. I could put you in contact with the people that are that would be qualified to answer that question, though. But H P U, I do know, does use the softball fields.
Um, any other questions from the community or board? Hearing them, thank you so much. I appreciate all that you do. Okay, and then we're gonna move along to city elected officials. Mayor Rick Banjardi's representative, Deputy Director Stephen Courtney, Department of Information Technology.
Good evening, uh, to Cleve Palama, Neighborhood Board members and residents. My name is Stephen Courtney, the mayor's representative and deputy director for the Department of Information Technology. I will start with highlights from the mayor's newsletter for October twenty twenty-five. That link, along with other information, can be found in the chat. Thousands say farewell to the legendary musician Fiji, who left a lasting impact on the island music scene. After mourning his death earlier this summer, friends, family members, and fans paid tribute to Fiji on September thirteenth with what was believed to be the largest event ever staged at a city and county of Honolulu facility, a massive tribute concert at the Waikiki Shell and Kapialani Park that drew upwards of thirty thousand people. The newly formed members of the city's Honolulu Ocean Safety Commission held their first ever on, uh, first ever meeting on September ninth at Honolulu Hollow. The commission is made up of five members with strong ties to the ocean and to communities across Oahu. Mayor Blanchardi welcomes a Harvard Bloomberg City Hall Fellow, Jada Rosman, to help with housing and regulatory reform on Oahu. Starting on September sixteenth tomorrow, your transit riders across Oahu can take Skyline to even more stations, including the Joint Base Pearl Harbor-Hickam and the Honolulu Airport. The Once Per Decade City Charter Review. The Honolulu Charter Commission is conducting its once a decade review of the city charter, which serves as Honolulu's constitution. Community members are invited to, to submit proposals by November seventh, two thousand twenty-five. The commission will also be holding community meetings in October. Dates, times, and locations are available on the Charter Commission website. We encourage everyone to participate in this important process. Please visit the commission's website at www.honolulucitycouncil.org/charter hyphen commission. I only have one item regards to departmental issues, follow-up, and and actually, Vafan already been asked, um, yeah, Board Member Ken Farm asked about the bus connectivity between Kia Lagoon and Middle Street Stations. And, uh, D T S did respond to me on that one in regards to, uh, again, starting tomorrow, October sixteenth, riders should use Skyline if traveling be between Ahua Lagoon Drive and K, Cleve Transit Station Center. The buses that will serve each station are from Alu, Ahua Lagoon Drive Station, six lines will be providing service there. And at Cleve Transit Center Station, there will be seven lines provided, um, uh, transit service there. At additional information, um, was provided by, um, the the, um, Heart, um, member, um, Gaby Kamachi, owner in the chat link, provides those information about those additional, information about those additional bus lines, um, between those stations. And if, again, if you have any issues with the city to report, please use Honolulu three-on-one. And hnl.info is your one-stop shop for updates from the city. That concludes the mayor's report. Mahalo. Are there any questions from the board?
Any questions from the board? Any questions from the community or online? Stephen, I just wanted to say I really appreciated the entire ceremony today with all the dignitaries, all the politicians, all the community, and all of which that Mufi and Rick has done for the community. I appreciate all of that, in writing the skyline and the numerous people that were there in attendance that supported that, and all the unions as well. Thank you so much for that experience.
Uh, yes, I was able to attend that as well, so it was a fantastic event.
Yeah, it was fantastic for the entire community, and many people partook in it, many. Thank you so much. Um, and any questions from the community or online? Hearing them, thank you so much, Courtney. Please give my best to Rick.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, and we're moving along to reading Qudero.
Aloha, Cherry Bonnens, as well as the Neighborhood Board, and to all the neighbors that are there this evening. Um, I just wanna correct myself. Uh, I, it, the Mapuna Puna area, um, was purchased by a majority of private properties, or private ownership, um, by a few corporations, uh, namely through the use of REITs, R E I T. was purchased by majority of private properties or private ownership by a few corporations, namely through the use of REITS. And there's some property that are owned by the Department of Hawaiian Homelands, but majority, majority of it are private property ownership. So I just wanted to correct myself. I stand corrected. And if you have any further comments about that, I will be ready and willing to take that. And, but I did want to clarify my statement there to Board Member Cullen. I also wanted to provide further information that a part of those discussions have been held with the Department of Hawaiian Homelands as well. So on to my report, if I could direct you, Chair and Board Members, do you have my report? Okay, awesome. Okay, so first off, awesome, wonderful presentations that you have today. I am appreciative of all the work that's being done at Mauleola. And speaking of Mauleola, I'm going to go backwards on my report. If you look, it's the last page and it's a snippet of a press release by the city administration that in the Mauleola area and Kahawiki area, there is going to be Sand Island, Sand Island smoke testing at the Sand Island Waste Water Collection System area. So starting from this past Monday to the end of this Friday, if you happen to see some smoke happening there, they are fanning non-toxic smoke into the underground sewer pipes so that they are testing for cracks in their pipes and looking for any leakage there. So no worries, no fret over there. But if you have any questions, I did provide number for the Department of Environmental Services as well as the, the honolulu.gov ENV website for more information. With that, also on the same page, we have Bill 52 of mine that was just adopted. Myself and the Chief Engineer of the city, Director Jean Albano, worked together. Councilmember Dos Santos Tam, and I quote, called it a nerdy bill. But yes, it's a nerdy bill to take care of some inconsistencies in our ordinances that prohibited the Department of Facility Maintenance from doing their best work to partner with the community to keep our streams and banks safe. Because as you all know, and has been stated by Principal Larkin, help you're doing well, Principal Larkin, that there's multiple jurisdictions. And with that, this will help provide certain enforcement gaps by the Department of Facility Maintenance. But it's kind of, I would kind of liken it like a softer approach of how DPP offers notices of violations, but in privately owned waterways. So next up, we also have, oh yeah, I don't want to take up too much time, but I do want to highlight our resolution that also just passed, Resolution 25-263. Councilmember Agi Tolba and myself are seeing a pilot project through with the Department of Transportation Services and the Hawaii State Public Library System to implement an 18-month pilot program to have library vending machines at the Polhala Skyline Rail, Skyline Station, as well as Kahawiki Skyline Station. I personally wanted it at all of the stations in my district, you know, but you know, I gotta make sure that the libraries are able to make it palatable because it's, I believe, from a grant that they received and was able to use as a, as a pilot. So with that, I also want to share that on that, this page here, the same page before the last page, that there's, we received a, an update on the implementation of the HNL build permitting platform in Councilmember Dos Santos Tam's committee. And I thought it was a great update. And so I provided the link there as well. So if you want to check it out, please do. Next up, I know that's not in our Kalihki Kahawiki area, but I wanted to note that there was a pretty interesting conversation that we had in the Procity area, hosted by my colleague Representative Sam Kong. We had Therese Richards from the U.S. Secret Service Honolulu Field Office. It was geared towards Kupuna, but we saw whole Ohana's there to talk about, about scams, about how to prevent mail, mail theft and identity theft and a lot of different things there. There is going to be a replaying of the recording on Olelo. And it will be tomorrow at 2:00 PM as on this Sunday at 10:00 PM. So if you're not watching the news on Sunday, then you can watch it, watch that. So I know that the Skyline Segment 2 thing, information was brought up. So I do have things highlighted here, but I do want to say Cherry Banas, beautiful as always at the, at the opening today, the ceremony today. And it's always great to see you. Let's see here. I also have other updates, but on the first page, I just want to highlight that the Honolulu Charter Commission is going to be providing community information sessions because we want to hear from all of you. Not we, I shouldn't say we, because the commission are their own entity. They're going to be looking at the, basically the framework of the city, and that's what the Charter Commission is. They're looking at removing outdated language. I know there are some efforts from different boards, like the Manoa Neighborhood Board, to talk about quorum for the Hart Board, which is interesting. I don't know. I'm not trying to get, get involved in, in a separate matter there, but those are some of the changes that are proposed. Things like the neighborhood boards or even the legislative branch or different city departments are, are, are outlined in the Charter Commission. So, or Charter, City Charter, excuse me. The closest one to all of us is Salt Lake District Park next Tuesday on October 21st at 6:00 PM at the, at the rec, rec area. I did ask, because they did ask for places in my district, I said, like, I don't care where you put it, but I want to make sure that we have a catch-all place for people who are not able to make it to either Nonakuli, Mililani, Sunset Beach, or Salt Lake. But, so there will be a catch-all for people who weren't able to make it in person, online via Zoom on the very next day after the Salt Lake District Park one on Wednesday, October 22 at 6:00 PM. And so please head to the link honolulucitycouncil.org forward slash charter dash commission to check out any other information and you can check out the link for the last meeting as well. Or if you need the link, please just message, email me, and we'll do our best to get that over to you all. With that, I just want to extend a mahalo to Cherry Banas because when, when there was the fire that was occurring in, I know not my district anymore, but in my former part of my district by Austin, I just wanted mahalo her because she assisted the neighbors, the residents, the factory employees, as well as worked with us on the ground with our city services as well as the church. And just really assisted our Department of Emergency Management connecting everybody. So mahalo Cherry Banas for that. I know that it was probably, you thought it was going to be a restful Sunday during, but the fire occurred and you were boots on the ground. So I appreciate that. And with that, I also want to mahalo all of you for being your eyes, ears, and nose for everything that's in our community. And I hope you all, all are doing well and staying safe and staying healthy.
Thank you so much, Radiant. Any questions from the board? Cards?
Hi, Radiant. Thank you to you and your staff for everything you've been doing. Just a quick question regarding Bill 60, which I know is being introduced by Councilmember Dos Santos Tam and you. It is regarding extending the Skyline Rail to go beyond Alamoana. That's its intended like endpoint. And to extend it further to UH Manoa. I'm just curious on, because it also outlined, I believe, Waikiki. How is that going to look like? Because they branch off to two different areas. Like is there, are they going to split into two areas? Or I just need to know more about like the details and if it's going to be amended? If there's any proposals about an amendment to the bill and everything?
Thank you. That's a great question, Cards, or Board, Board Member Pintars, or are you vice chair? Sorry, I want to call you the correct title. Okay, awesome. So I just want to, first off, note that yes, there is an amendment. Because, you know, first off, we have the minimum operating segment, which is the most viable portion, which is what has changed the route from West Kapole to now East Kapole to Alamoana currently. To then have it in comparison to the locally preferred alternative, which is from West Kapole to UH Manoa. And so I just want to first off, start with that. And it was amended to then remove the specificities of where it could be expanded. Because right now, people have mentioned that, you know, on the East Kapole side, that rail just starts, ends at nowhere. We understand that prior to all of us, there has been some concerns of extending it to maybe one of the DHHL properties or now Kamakana Alii. But now, Kamakana Alii is, has been built. Different communities have been built in East Kapole. And so now there have been further discussions of not being wedded to the, those specific parameters of going to UH Manoa. But something that we can currently do right now is to allow it to go, to allow to just have the minimum operating segment, which is right now East Kapole to Alamoana, to match locally preferred alternative of West Kapole to UH Manoa. And so I'm not saying that that's the amendment in the bill right now, but that is what is most viable and most possible right now. But the, once again, the amendment, it removed any mention of UH Manoa, which I'm getting a lot of, people are upset about that. I didn't realize that we would be so upset about that. But we removed it as well as any mention of Waikiki. I know that different council members have mentioned saying, bring it more to Kamakana Alii. We did not even put that in there. And the reason is because we want to ensure that there's the, and I don't want to say flexibility, because we, we are not here to give Hart flexibility and just give them any kind, give them any kind, right? And that's not what I, I would want to do either. We need a lot of assurance that we can manage and oversee what is happening there. But at the same time, in my mind, and I don't think I actually even talked to my co-introducer, sorry Lynn, I'll, I'll talk to him first. But let, let me explain this to the community that, to me, it makes the most sense to do to what has been voted on by the voters, which is a locally preferred alternative from West Kapole to UH Manoa. So I just want to say that it's a, it's definitely a work in progress. I am looking at having the discussion in my committee again as it, as it passed out of public hearing when we had our Kapole meeting. And hopefully we can have more discussion there.
Okay, one more follow-up from Cards.
Thank you. And I do hope that with the continued, if the proposal goes through, I just hope that, um, sorry, just real quick. I just hope that we continue to look more into where we're building it, especially with recognized burial spots. There are going to be some unrecognized burial spots when we build the rail. But we have to acknowledge that there are recognized spots that shouldn't be upended. And we make sure they are respected and we can find workaways to make sure the rail is being built alongside, helping find respect within those recognized burial spots. Mahalo. Okay, who's next?
Any other, sorry, thank you. Any other questions from the board? Evelyn?
Hi, Radiant. So I know this entire rail thing, but I think there's a dire need to address that's way out west. The west side people really needed it, not Waikiki.
Yeah.
And I, and I don't have, I don't hear any type of discussion about servicing the people that really truly need it because they come in, in the morning with the sun on their face and, and they stay in traffic for a couple of hours in the morning and they face the same thing going back. And, and our city council is not even addressing that need. We address that, I'd be happy. I'm not out there, but I know that's the need and we should really help those people.
Thank you, Board Member Cullen. Actually, Chair Waters brought that up and that's why we removed the specificity of UH Manoa and Waikiki. So once again, it was amended in my committee, Board Member Cullen. And I know that Chair Waters definitely keeps bringing that up in, in all the hearings that we've had. We had our public hearing for this bill out in Kapole as well, where Chair Waters also highlighted it too. So 100% Board Member Cullen, I'm going to tell Chair Waters that you are right there singing his tune right there. But I know that Councilmember Dos Santos Tam and I had no, in no way or shape or form the, not, I don't want to say, we had no inclination or inclination to really just ignore the west side and or bringing it to, to Waikiki or UH Manoa. It's really just was what was next, in the next step after the segments. How do I say? The segments that would have been after Alamoana. I was like, what was that place called again? Yeah, Alamoana. And so that's the main reason for that. And yes. Thank you, Board Member Cullen. I really appreciate it.
Any other questions from the board? Any questions from the community or online? Hearing them. Thank you so much, Radiant. And again, thank you for Tommy Waters, the speech, everybody, especially Rick, DTS. Everybody there, DOT, they did a great job in explaining everything in detail. So thank you so much again.
Mahalo.
Okay, and moving along to Councilmember Tyler Dos Santos Tam.
Aloha, Chair. Aloha, Board Members and Community Members. Could everybody hear me okay?
Yes.
Am I loud?
We're, we're, we're working on the speaker right now. Yeah, you're good.
I'll whisper.
Thank you.
You want me to go ahead?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, well, first of all, I want to say thank you to Councilmember Cordero. Everyone can see that our offices work very, very closely together. And that it's a, it's a great partnership and, and something that I'm always thrilled about. So. I will be very brief. An improvement project to expand the interior space of the multipurpose building at Fern Community Park is beginning. The project aims to expand the building by enclosing this facility's Eva Side Lenai, providing approximately 600 square feet of additional interior space. This will provide extra room for community recreational activities, including arts and crafts commonly offered through the Honolulu Department of Parks and Recreation. The multipurpose building and the immediate area around the building will remain closed for the duration of the project. The park's fields, courts, playground, and other amenities will remain open during regular park hours, so daily from 6:00 to 8:00 PM. And the recreational programming normally held in the multipurpose building will continue. So the construction work hours are scheduled between 7:00 AM and 4:00 PM on weekdays, excluding holidays. And the project is expected to be finished with the multi, and the multipurpose building reopened for public use in spring of 2026. So very exciting news there. On October, I also, I put the council members newsletter in the chat. So you can see his October newsletter and all the previous newsletters if you go to that link. So I won't belabor, belabor that, but one snippet is that October 1st, the city council approved Bill 51 to create a downtown business improvement district or bid. The bid will fund enhanced services such as safety protocols, landscaping, and sidewalk cleaning to keep the area cleaner and safer. This community-driven effort reflects months of input from the downtown businesses and residents who helped to shape the plan. Now the measure is clear, has, that has cleared the city council, the bill will be signed on Monday. the bill will be signed on Monday with the mayor at a ceremony. So we're very, very excited to report that. And I think that's all I have. Does anyone have any questions for me to take back to Councilmember Dos Santos Tam?
Oh, thank you. One moment, Lynn. Any questions from the board? Any questions from the community or online?
Chair. Chair, it's Radiant.
Oh, Radiant, oh, hi. Go ahead.
Sorry, kind of a question, but also kind of an, a, a request to the community. So Councilmember, sorry Lynn, but Councilmember Dos Santos Tam asked me about a left-hand turn coming out from Waiakamilo onto King Street. A huge request was from Hufftailing onto King Street. That was finally done, as you all know. So mahalo to the board for your support. I do want to push out to both, through both my office as well as Councilmember Dos Santos Tam, to the Kalihii community to ask about their queries about any concerns from Waiakamilo onto King, because right now we have, once again, the Hufftailing onto King instead. So if you have any suggestions for that or any other further concerns, please let me know so that we would be able to get a large amount of people to say so, and then we would, it'll help our case when we submit it to the powers that be at the city administration. So thank you. Sorry Lynn.
No worries.
Any other questions from the community or the board, or anybody online? Well, Hearing None, thank you so much. And again, Lynn, please tell Tyler I enjoyed the skyline and everybody there, and everybody did a great job. Thank you so much.
I will. It's so great that you were out there.
Yeah. Okay, and we're going to move along to residents and community concerns. James? Whoever's from the community that has any concerns, you can go ahead and line up if you need to, behind the mic.
With your permission, oh, James Sung, with your permission, I would like to introduce Dr. Miku. She's online. She's from CERN. She would like to speak to the committee next month. And I'll let her introduce herself.
Okay, go ahead.
Hey, can you guys hear me okay?
Yes, if you can turn your camera on though.
Oh, background. I guess you guys will see my room. There we go. There it is. Here's the background. Anyway, good evening. Thank you so much for that brief introduction. I'm going to put information into the chat, and I'll also make sure that it gets to you guys for the Neighborhood Board Assistant. So I, I'm Dr. Miku Lintain. I am the Director of SEREEM. It stands for Community Engagement for Zooted Neighborhoods. I'm based out of Kapiwana Community College. At some point, somebody has come here and presented. It's been a long time. And so the invitation was just to get neighborhood, not neighborhood, get resilience hubs kind of back on the radar for folks, and just give you a little bit of a check-in about what's been going on in Oahu and what we've been doing to support resilience hubs. So right now, we have something called the Resilience Hub Learning Community. Long name, but it's a community practice. And we're supporting individual hubs and getting started. We're helping hubs connect to each other. And we're also potentially supporting coordinated regional networks of hubs. And so part of what we're doing, we meet monthly to support these resilience hubs, but we're also starting a roster as new hubs want to sign up, provide training, resources. And we now have some funding to support the first summit next year. So I know you guys are, I want to keep it short. So I guess I just put my information into the chat. We have a special invitation the next three Thursdays. If anyone wants to join for meet and greet, you can join. Email me, have a chance to learn more. And I can also come back and present more at another time. So thank you so much for the opportunity just to, to share and make this back on the.
Thank you. Yeah, so if you can give your information, so if anybody wants to join, learn more, what is a hub? We don't know. CERN, nobody knows. So they can click on that information and they can join if they choose to. Is that what you're trying to say?
Yes, it's SEREEM. SEREEM, yep.
SEREEM, okay, okay. Thank you so much, doctor. Any questions from the board? Any questions from the community or online? Okay, Hearing None, thank you so much. Appreciate your presentation.
Thank you.
And, yeah, and Cards, you?
Hi, okay, I'm with like three different announcements. First one is Hawaii Ship. I'm a part of Hawaii Ship, which is the state health insurance assistance program. We help people with Medicare. And today, starting on October 15th up until December 7th, it is open enrollment. So with open enrollment, this is when you can actually make changes to your plan, whether it's from Medicare Original, Original Medicare to Medicare Advantage, or if you want to enroll in Part D, any changes to a different type of Advantage Plan. So contact hawaiiship.org. That is not our email. That's the website. Secondly, please follow our Instagram and Facebook group. Our Instagram is @kalihipalama15, and our Facebook is Kalihii Palama Neighborhood Board 15 on the Facebook group. You can email us for more events, details, or resources, if you would like to share them, so we can disseminate it, at kalihipalamanearhaboard@gmail.com. Lastly, I don't know if we're gonna create committees. I know we have it, but just in case, we, just in case we delay it, Neighborhood Board will be participating in the Pride Festival this Saturday. So if you want to walk with us and support the LGBTQIA+ community, you can. It will be at Alamoana Beach Park at Magic Island, starting at, I believe, 5 o'clock. Thank you.
Oh, I'm in. This is Lynn from Councilmember Dos Santos Tam's office. And if I may, the Pride Parade will kick off at 3:00 p.m.
Okay, thank you. Thank you Lynn for that clarification. Dana?
Yeah, my name is Dana. Yep, I'm got three announcements to make. Next one is not in my area, so it's your area. It's a Kapalama Complex Halloween Fright Night, and it's on the 21st from 5:15 to 6:00, 6 o'clock is registration. And it's for, at the Kalakaua Gym. And the other one is on the 23rd, which is at the Kalii Valley Community Park Gym. Both of them are doing simultaneous things for Upper Kalii and Lower Kalii. And the other one, one to mention is November 17th, is Farrington's Community's School Community Council Meeting, and it's at the cafeteria at 5:30. And if you need information, we can get you the information as well. So those three things that are happening. That's right. The parade which you guys signed up for, right? Hopefully, all you guys show up. And trying to keep the tradition alive, going from Kalii Union Church, down King Street, up Hufftailing, and back to Kapalama School, which is where the Pa'ina is happening. So it's going to be Fri- Friday, Black Friday, the 28th of November. So it's all free, and everybody should be coming. Hopefully, that's one of the fun things that we get to do in the community.
Can we just comment real quick? Chair Diosa, hi. So in case anyone doesn't know about KBA, they are dissolving, and we're partnering with, FACF is partnering with KBA since they're slowly retiring, and we're taking over the, what is it called? The Kalihii Christmas Parade. So it happens on every Black Friday. I think this year, what we did like last year, we're going to be combining both boards from Kalihii Valley. So if you guys would like to sign up, I don't know how we're going to do that if we can violate sunshine laws, we can't email each other, like three more people in a group. So I mean, if today you guys can have a, have a sign-up sheet, if possible, to, just so we can get a head count, because Dana here is with Angelica. She's in charge of all the groups and other organizations who are planning on attending. So it would help just as far as planning.
Today's the deadline.
Today's the deadline. So if you, I mean, and honestly too, if you guys don't want to march, you can also rent out a trolley, which is what FACF is doing. So yes.
Perfect. Thank you so much. Ken or Dan? Whoever's going to be stepping up to the mic, just step up.
Thanks, everybody. Again, Dan Larkin, Principal here at this awesome school. I want to say thank you all for joining us again. A real quick announcement for us is not this Friday, but next Friday, we have our trunk or treat here on campus, and we have an awesome positive surprise. The Tagata Moana Hui Foundation, which is Mr. Tony Silva's Foundation, is going to be DJing and emceeing for us, and they're going to be helping us host. And so they're going to be providing EBT, SNAP, and preschool supports and signups here while, or hopefully like 600, some kids come by. So please, if you have family and Kiki that might not get a Halloween, they can come on through over here, what it is to support our Kiki in this community. And if you all want to stop by, say hi, wave at the kids, and you know, throw candy randomly, that'd be awesome as well. Other than that, there's a lot of other good activities around the holiday time, this holiday being Halloween. So we are right after the, the one over at the rec center is the day before. Up, over by Dole, that rec center up there, they have their Halloween night, that night before. So lots of activities going on.
Thank you. So this is the three minutes of fame, right? We get a chance to go and say things. So I just wanted to mention, you know, this is just to the board, why I'm so passionate about, wondering about public transportation and Route 20.
Introduce yourself, because.
I'm sorry, my name is Ken Farm, Board Member, former Board Chair. But I wanted to address this to the community as well as to the board of why I'm so passionate about looking at bus routes, especially like Bus Route 20. Why is that so important? It's important because of where it would go to before, unevenly, and the things it would, it would hit in terms of the different bus stops. So there is a senior housing that's right there. In addition to, there is a county jobs, it's not Job Corps, but it's a job center through the county that's inside of Dole Cannery. A lot of people use that area. So that is one of the reasons why I kind of fought for in terms of what can we do? Instead of, yeah, there's a seven, but is a seven actually going to serve the area? The 20 is going to be gone. And that's the other reason I ask about for the airport, because a lot of people would use that to get to the airport. A lot of times, it's better when we do have some other bus routes that go along, are along the same way as opposed to what I've been hearing sometimes is, oh, well, it's more efficient if we just do it this way, right? Sometimes, we all know this, if we take the bus, it's incoming on the time. And if it only comes once an hour or something like that, then you're stuck. So that's one of the reasons why I kept bringing that up. Furthermore, I wanted to bring up about the connectivity. That was one of the things when I was Chair, we talked about that. That was, how do we connect, let's say Kalihii Kai, right, to this upper area? And that's how we got one of the bus routes to get down to that area, was because we had to have that conversation saying, hey, how do we make sure that we service people there, because people live there too? So that is, we talk about connectivity, connecting them to the rest of, from Dillingham and onward, so they can go ahead and use the bus stop. Third thing is, still going to try to push this through, or ask the Chair nicely on this one. But for a four-way stop, and it doesn't have to be all the time, but a four-way stop when it comes to Kalihii and King. For me, looking at that, seeing people when they have to walk, students or whatnot, you have 1,800 students that walk in that area, trying to get to different parts. So I think it makes sense during certain parts where you have a time where they can get to whatever buses they need to get to, or what area of the street they need to get to. Because that way, we don't have to worry about the vehicles. I see this thing about pedestrian safety. That's great. That's fantastic. But those are one of the ways that we can do it. As a former member of the Citizens Advisory Committee, looking at things like that, that was one of the suggestions that I had. Was we take areas that look like that, and we have four-way stops. Doesn't have to be for the whole day, but during the peak times of when school's going to be over, and we know that students are going to be walking across. Because if we have it like that, then there's no question of cars turning or whatnot. People can get to where they need to get to. They don't have to run across to try to catch a bus, because there's a bus that's going to be on the opposite side, and then that bus is going to go. I've seen it where buses has a left, with nobody in it. So that is one of the reasons why I'm on the chair. Thank you for the time.
Thank you so much, Ken.
Hi, Evelyn Cullen, and I'd like to piggyback in support of what Ken had just mentioned. I'm in full support of reinstating 20, because I am on that line, and I've seen the amount of people that get on that bus and use that bus going to and from on Nimitz Highway in and of itself. And when he's speaking about asking for a four-way stop at Kalihii and King Street, it's not an ask, it's a need. It's a need for all the pedestrians in Kalihii. Majority of our pedestrians in our area do use public transportation. They do not use the vehicles. That people come from over Leke Leke, that traverse the areas multiple times during the day. And the amount of pedestrians for my compadres in the area, that's a very big need, not an ask. So I am in support of the four-way stop at King and Kalii Street, as well as keeping Bus 20 intact. Thank you.
Any other community concerns or online? Hearing None, thank you so much. We're going to be taking a 10-minute break.
Neighborhood Board 15 is going to be called back. It's 9:10. Okay, so now we're going to go ahead to our state-elected officials. You have three minutes each, and we're going to start off with Senator Carroll's office. Okay, next we're moving on to Senator Donna Mercado Kim.
Aloha. Good evening, everyone. It's nice to see all of you at Kalihii Waiana Elementary. It's good to see Principal Larkin there. I've been working closely with him, and will continue to do so regarding the bridge that connects KPT to the school. It needs repairs, and we did put money into the budget, but DOT elapsed it. So we are going to be working on making sure we can take care of that bridge. I know it's getting late, and I know everybody has time restraints. So do we, as well as our staff. So I'm not sure if you folks have a stop time, because I know some boards have a hard stop at 9 o'clock. So I think it'd be great if we can somehow anticipate this, because like I said, our staff come into these board meetings, they don't get overtime or anything like that, and you know, it gets really late. So I'm going to try and keep this short. I did pass out my report to all of you. I have been responding to complaints about the speeding and pedestrian safety on School Street. And so even though School Street is a city street, and I have asked State DOT to look into assessing the area, especially between Hufftailing and Lana Kila Avenue, to explore ways that the state can help the city with traffic calming measures, putting raised crosswalks over there as well. I know there was a fatal accident, hit and run, last month, where a pedestrian was struck in the crosswalk. And so I am also working with Councilmember Tam's office, so that we can make sure that our residents are safe, especially because of the redevelopment project that is happening, the 250-unit Affordable Senior Community Project that is estimated to be completed in the third quarter of 2026. We have Lana Kila Elementary, Leke Leke School, as well as St. Teresa, all in that area. And so we're working on that. On my report, we talk about quiet hours. I'm not going to go over that. You can read that for yourself. Kalihii Waikapuna Group there, if anyone is interested in meeting up, they do meet Monday, Wednesday, Fridays from 11:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. for lunch and socialization. And the group is for seniors 60 years of age or older, and it's free of charge. And I did meet with them for Grandparents' Day, and they're a great group of people. The legislature is hiring, so our session is coming up. So we are going to be hiring starting in December. It'll run from December to May. So if anyone's interested in working during the legislative session, we are looking for legislative assistants, researchers, attorneys, and committee clerks. You can go ahead and put your resume in at resume@capital.hawaii.gov, or you can call my office, and we can get you more information. I did do a backpack giveaway at the Kapalama Elementary and Kalihii Elementary School. And in the past, I've also done it with Kalihii Waiana and Ka'iva'i. Let's see, there's going to be a workshop. I know everybody talked about the opening of the Rail Rapid Transit Sky. But this meeting is going to be taking place on October 23rd, on Thursday, 6:00 to 8:30 at King David Kalakaua Middle School. And this is to get feedback on the preliminary design of the stations that is going to be taken up as we get to Chinatown and to downtown. So I know this board is very much concerned about that. So you might want to be there October 23rd, 6:00 to 8:30 at Kalakaua Middle School. And then finally, I want to just talk about how Farrington High School was selected for the launch for the direct to. Uh, then finally, I wanna just talk about how Farrington High School was selected for the launch for the direct-to-UH program. Um, UH President as well as Superintendent came to Farrington High School and Farrington seniors were the first to receive their letters of acceptance. So this new program accepts everyone with, uh, two-point-seven or above are eligible or are enrolled, will enroll into and be accepted to any of the seven community colleges as well as West Oahu and, uh, Hilo. Manoa will probably come online next year. So every senior will get a letter saying they've been accepted and they just need to go online and fill out the information. And that's it. So it makes it simple, easy, and that they know that they can, uh, go to college. And with that, I'm going to open up for any questions.
Any questions from the board? Any questions from the community or online? Thank you very much, Senator Ken. Senator Glenn Wakai?
Hi, online, um, Ashley for Senator, uh, on behalf of Senator Wakai. Um, he's currently traveling, um, so he couldn't be here tonight, unfortunately. Uh, I did email the Neighborhood Board Report to, um, Chair Ibanez as well as, um, NCO, um, Melissa. So, um, hopefully they disseminated to you folks. If not, please contact our office so I can get everyone's individual emails. Um, but for the, um, for the October newsletter, Senator really wanted to highlight, um, the new, um, Pets in Prison Program that he launched. Um, it took two years for him to implement, but he's super proud of it. Um, the Women's Community Correctional Center, um, just started, um, a program called Transforming Annual and Incarcerated Individuals Lives. It's a tail program where, um, there certain inmates will be able to foster kittens, uh, and get them ready for adoption. Um, so we're hoping, you know, for healing and, and, um, um, healing and love for, um, both the individuals as well as the animals. Um, it's something that is very near and dear to Senator's heart. Um, and we're hoping that if this year-long project, um, pilot program, sorry, um, goes well, that we can hopefully introduce maybe, um, dogs, um, and maybe, uh, expand the program to the, um, men's prison in Halaba. Um, uh, another thing that we wanted to highlight was that, uh, September was, um, Fetal Alcohol Awareness Month. Um, and he is a strong advocate for, um, legislation to help, um, mothers, uh, struggling with this, uh, disorder. Um, I am open to take any questions and concerns back to the Senator.
Any questions from the board? Any questions from the community or online? Seeing none, thank you very much.
Thank you. Good night.
Night. Uh, Representative Daniel Holt?
Aloha, um, online. Um, aloha kakoa. I'm Kelly from Representative Holt's office. Mahalo, I'm here to share a few quick updates about what our office has been doing to serve our community as well as some upcoming events. First, Representative Holt has been working with the Department of Labor and Industrial Relations, Office of Community Services, and Aloha United Way to launch Act Three Ten, a new program providing fifty million dollars in emergency nonprofit grant funding statewide. These grants support nonprofits that provide critical services like healthcare, education, food security and homelessness prevention. To qualify, applicants must have experienced reductions or loss of federal funding or primarily serve populations impacted by those cuts. Applications open October thirteenth and will close October twenty-fourth at four-thirty PM. Nonprofits can apply online at auw-two-one-one.my.site.com under Act Three Ten Nonprofit Grant Application. I've also put this information in the chat. Next, we invite everyone to the upcoming Community Resource Fair happening this Saturday, October eighteenth, from nine AM to twelve PM at Kuakini Health System's Halepoo Lamamo Auditorium. You'll be able to connect with agencies offering healthcare, early learning, kapuna services and city and county resources. Admission and parking are free and it's a great opportunity to learn about local programs helping our community. We're also promoting the Pop-Up Legal Clinic in Kalih on Saturday, November first, from one to four PM at the Lona Kila Multipurpose Senior Center. Volunteer attorneys will be offering free legal help with estate planning, family law, bankruptcy and district court issues. To make an appointment, call eight oh eight five two eight seven zero four six by October twenty-first. Interpreters are available and walk-ins are welcome if space allows. And lastly, the most exciting, The Pantry by Feeding Hawaii Together has launched a new Monday food distribution for federally impacted workers starting on October twentieth. Participants can receive fresh groceries and pantry items once a week by registering online at the pantry.org. They're also looking for volunteers. Shifts run Monday through Friday, nine AM to two PM. Mahalo nui for the opportunity to share these updates. Representative Holt sends his aloha and appreciation to the board and to everyone here tonight who continues to uplift and strengthen our Kalih Palama community. I'm open for any questions that I, um, I can take back to the representative.
Are there any questions from the board? Are there any questions from the community or online? Seeing none, thank you very much. Okay.
Thank you.
Representative Shirley Templo?
Yes, hi. Um, this is Ed Thompson for Representative Templo. Unfortunately, she's traveling, so I'll be giving her a report tonight. So just wanted to report, I'm gonna do it as quick as possible. Our office continues to focus on keeping our neighborhoods safe and strong through partnerships with community members, local organizations and law enforcement. We're working to address safety concerns, especially the recent, um, issues around in our district. And so the first one was, we had a Kalih Safety Task Force meeting that she had, that Representative Templo had put together. And we met with, um, people over at, um, Koheo Park Terrace. And that included PAC, Kokoua Kalih Valley, Parents and Children Together, the Hawaii Public Housing Authority, the KPT Security, the Kalih Valley Homes, as well as with HPD. And, um, we're putting together the ideas. It was a quick, it was a meeting that we took in all different ideas and looking at different ways we can address this problem. And hopefully, um, we'll come up with our report soon. And we're looking at doing another meeting soon also in November. Second of all, um, we're working on a Kalih Kai Security Watch Program. So we've been coordinating with HPD, with John over at District Five, um, in putting together a meeting to take care of issues from the Pu'uhali Road and the Libby Street areas and all other areas below in Kalih Kai. And finally, um, I wanted to announce some of the other things that we're having. So for people who are, for nonprofits, um, the application process has started, uh, for nonprofit grants um, over at the Capitol. And you can go to the website, www dot capital dot hawaii dot gov. Um, and look for the application under Act Three Ten. And, um, you can begin the process to, um, uh, put in an application for a grant for your organization. And then lastly, really quick, the Kahumanu Homes Resident Meeting, um, that's coming up. Um, actually they had it. Oh, no, it's coming up, coming up tomorrow at six PM. So it's gonna be at the Commandeem Homes Community Hall. So that's my quick report. It was also sent to all the members of the Neighborhood Board to your email. Um, if you have any questions, um, you can let me know. Anything now? If not, thank you very much. And, uh, Representative Templo, thanks all of you for all your hard work.
Uh, is there any questions from the board? Any questions from the community or online? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Uh, lastly, for state-elected officials, Governor Josh Green's representative, Dre?
Uh, aloha, board members. Um, I've just put in the chat the link to Governor's October Newsletter and I'll just point out there are updates on some new housing projects, um, statewide as well as some tax workshops, uh, to update, um, tax repairs on new laws and requirements. And there's a new assessment that I own ho'ola, but I did not in cruising the newsletter find any specific updates for, uh, for the district. But, um, understanding that we are, you know, running long in the meeting, I just wanna see if anyone has any questions for, uh, Governor Green or the administration.
Are there any questions from the board? Any questions from the community or online? Thank you very much, Dre.
Thank you.
Okay, so now we're moving on to board business. Um, due to time constraints, we're just gonna be, um, addressing resolutions to vote on, um, pesticides reform resolution, which was presented by Ella Alexander this evening. So, um, okay, so there's gonna be a roll call regarding it. Okay, I'm gonna open the discussion regarding the pesticide reform resolution. Are there any discussions?
Can we make a motion to, uh, roll call? Vogue?
Okay, so there's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been second?
All right. Now we gotta take roll call, right? Okay.
Did you wanna do?
Oh, Eric Miette Mura?
Um, Evelyn, I'll.
You'll do it?
I'll do that.
Okay, thank you.
But, um, this is, the motion is to support the pesticide reform resolution. Um, I'm sorry, who made the motion?
Cards and then second Diosa.
Okay, when I call your name, um, please state your, or your motion. Evelyn Cullen?
Support. Yes.
Diosa? Ken Farm?
With reservations.
You can either say yes, no, or abstain. Okay. Donald is not here. Pat Hoppy? Randy? Eric? Willis? Cards?
Aye.
Lloyd? Benji?
Yes.
Lynn? And Amanda left. You have six ayes, one no, and two abstain. Motion not adopted.
Okay.
Okay, so now we're moving on, um, for board business, we will be tabling, um, two, three, um, B one, two, till next month. Um, as well as committee reports, since we don't have any committees. Um, I'm gonna go on to committee resources and educational institutions. If there's any concern about homeless individuals or groups in your neighborhood that needs, uh, help, please email honolulucourt@honolulu.gov or call Core at eight oh eight seven six eight two six seven three to ask for help. Salvation Army also donate and please give as many. Prepare for the holiday. Hundreds, if not thousands, of families have been affected financially by the FED. The federal cuts, our committees will continue to be very challenged due to this crisis. Um, either give your time to volunteer or ring bells or simply donate your money, whatever you can spare. Please give us, give to the struggling Ohanas. Um, St. Elizabeth Church, looking to volunteers in the community, you can help feed the hungry. Parish of St. Elizabeth Episcopal Church is their home. Aloha United Way, two-one-one, or, um, our two-on-one specialists are specifically trained to help you find the local resources you need for food, shelter and financial assistance to childcare, parenting supports, kapuna care, disability services and health services. Announcement, the next Kapalama Neighborhood Board Number Fifteen meeting is scheduled to be on Wednesday.
Sorry, before that, one more, um, a, a part of, uh, board business. Can I please add on, uh, or make a motion to add on for next, um, meeting that we, one, two things. One, start earlier, cause seven PM is kinda late. And two, please rearrange the, um, the agenda um, according to, let me see, like, can we please, um, make it a point to have community concerns first and as well as presenters to, um, have their resolutions passed first, so they're not sitting, we may not vote on it. Melissa? Can we, it's not, we can't vote on it now, but can we add that to the agenda for the next time? Talk about it.
Absolutely, yes. And I also wanna add on the certificate in regards to, uh, D five that was being handed out. Um, not with any consensus of our board, so I wanted to add that on to the agenda. Um, anybody in opposition to add that to the agenda?
If you go one by one or is it? Wait, um, just quick, uh, I, wait, was the motion to make the resident concerns first in the agenda?
The motion was to revise the entire agenda.
Okay, so which one's going first again?
Uh, doesn't matter right now. We can't open it for discussion, right? That has to be just, we're just, I'm bringing it up.
Motion and it has to be clear.
Can it be a blanket? A blanket, um, motion, just to revise the entire agenda?
See, that can be one.
Beautiful. Thank you so much.
I second it.
I did.
I appreciate it. I appreciate it.
So then we all agreed that to revise our agenda and then also to add the certificate and to start earlier. So we'll talk about that next time.
Sorry, Melissa, one more thing. Is there a way we can also add, starting earlier? Good night. Thank you. And time, seven is really late.
How about, yeah. All right, um, the announcements, uh, next Neighborhood Board meeting for, uh, Neighborhood Board Fifteen is scheduled on Wednesday, the nineteenth of November, seven PM, right here at Kalih Waina Elementary School Library. Um, the Neighborhood Board could also be seen. It's recording on Olelo Channel forty-nine at olelo.org, live at the following times, first Monday of each month at nine PM or second and fourth Thursday of each month at eleven AM. Meeting adjourned.